Every evening, as long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukwokikapiamah must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must proceed to offer every prayer to Chukwu Okike Abiyama who decided in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today but from of old, our Father who art in heaven. That your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it, that we may offer every glory unto thee, that we may offer you every adoration and adulation, because there is none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy that you are our Lord, our God and our Creator. This evening, we offer these your children unto thee all over this very planet that you created. They are listening across the entire 24 time zones on this very planet. We are the inhabit. They are listening to your gospel this very evening. This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal. This very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordained. Onye primi henin that this very gospel must be preached, that mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year, we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood, they have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the 30th of August, as we are being failed by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace, to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth, that you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created for one singular purpose and that purpose alone, which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have seen? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. You must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing, which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you, to destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty because we remain every blessed day. Chukwa Abiyama believe go whiter than white and whiter than snow. Is there any way that we have seen that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses, to enable us to fulfill your own word, which was spoken thousands of years ago, that instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth will cease to exist? You opened your mouth, Chukwokikapiamah, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweh Heshua, who came here and said, "Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end, we know that Biafra will come, that these children that we have given birth to all over the world and their children and their children and their children, as long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans, they will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be ralphed in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery and your grace under our command. Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succour to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one blood and one flesh of your children, the ethics and the bibios, the ison, the shekiri, the isobos and also those of them from Isoko. We are traveling all the way to the lands of Igala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Ige, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy because Biafra will come and when it does, we will dance on these streets, I'm telling you. By the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad, we are drunk in your glory and rightfully so because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra, that your will may be fulfilled in our time. All these we pray, all these we ask for. In no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. My name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you. I lead indigenous people of Biafra, Ibiobi. So also do I command the armies of Biafra. They are fiercely loyal. They are loyal, I tell you, and doing the work that I expect them to do. I also direct radio Biafra, not through any power which I possess or any extraordinary knowledge, but by your grace, oh Lord. We honor you and we adore you. I know that some people listening, including the British, may not understand what we are doing. But there is nobody in Britain that answers Nwachuku, the child of heaven. We do. Therefore, when we worship our Father, people should not try to be jealous. They should not feign ignorance or misunderstanding because we are ancient people. We have been doing this for over 5,000 years and will continue to do so until the end of time.
The time is now, we want to go. Remember your promises. Tell me what we do, everybody want to kill us. They want to take what belong to us. We deliver our neighbor, so we deliver ourselves too. So it is written in the holy book. The land of rising sun is our hope. Because. Mehe. 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 Papa, Piko Mehe. Any na yongi piko nu. Si ten de muzeke kamehe. Iwele.
Those who are asking, "Did you say Biafra will come in 2023?" Biafra has been restored already. What is remaining is a complete declaration that will be defended. And before that happen, there are many things that we need to put in place. I want you to recount the achievement of the Biafra Republic government in exile under the leadership of Simon Ekba, what we have achieved in 2023 and ask yourself that question again. And you will look very stupid. We have been able to form government in exile in 2023. In 2023, we have formed the de facto government. In 2023, we have launched Biafra Liberation Army. In 2023, we launched Biafra Navy. We launched Biafra Air Force. We launched the forces of Biafra. In 2023, we adopted Helsinki Declaration, which is the constitution of Biafra. In 2023, we had a convention in Finland where Biafra people gathered from all over the world as delegates to vote on the Biafra Charter, which is a living document subjected to amendment. In 2023, we have created 40 states of Biafra. And believe me, many more states will come because we are not done yet. In 2023, not only that we created state, we also brought a redesigned and redrawn Biafra map to reflect the current situation and the current demography of Biafra. In 2023, we started engaging officially Nigeria state in a guerrilla warfare on self-defense. In 2023, we officially and publicly engage Nigeria terrorist army and we are neutralizing them on daily basis. It has never happened before in the history of Biafra after the war. In 2023, we publicly and openly made sure that Nigeria doesn't kill again in Biafra land and go free. So if you look at those things I've mentioned and those wars I have not even mentioned, are you still going to challenge Simon Ekba that Biafra has not been restored in 2023? Biafra Declaration is not about mouth pronouncement. It's about putting every structure in place. It's about putting every mechanism and measures in place to shaping the map and the structure of Biafra. In 2023, we have designed the economic viability of Biafra. In 2023, we have kicked off the Biafra Open Development Project. In 2023, we've made a lot of impact globally. In 2023, the Biafra awareness gained the highest momentum in the history of Biafra since after the war. In 2023, we made the Nigeria terrorist army to cry on the floor of National Assembly. It has never happened in the history of Nigeria. In 2023, those who are serving as the agent of Nigeria, benefiting from the corrupt entity called Nigeria, openly called for persecution, execution and the kidnapping and arresting of Simon Ekba because they know that this is a different thing from what they have seen in their entire lives. In 2023, they called for the arrest of Simon Ekba and called for the release of Mazinamdekanu, Confucian. In 2023, after they have used many years to plan the kidnapping of Mazinamdekanu, they have come to say Mazinamdekanu is a saint. He's a very gentleman, he's a nice person. But just two years ago, they kidnapped this nice person from Kenya. Two years ago, they tortured him for eight days. Two years ago, he was an evil man. Two years ago, they called him terrorist. Two years ago, he was everything evil to them. Two years ago, they spent hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. They kidnapped him and put him into private jet from Kenya to Nigeria. Two years ago, Mazinamdekanu was everything evil to Nigeria, including to Anes and Ibo and all of them. Two years ago, he was the only problem of Nigeria. Two years ago, he was the only person that constituted all manner of insecurity in Nigeria. He was the one who is more deadly than Boko Haram. He was everything that Nigeria don't want to see. Today, as Simon Ekba take the Biafra liberation to the next level, the same people are now calling Mazinamdekanu the most sensible person. These are hypocrites, these are devilish people, these are criminals that only thing they want to do is to give dog a bad name in order to kill it. They have given bad that name to Mazinamdekanu. They themselves were the one who condemned Mazinamdekanu. The same people today, they have seen that, yes indeed, someone actually followed this footsteps of Mazinamdekanu and ready to drag all of them to Biafra land. When we get to Biafra land, we will treat their fuck up very well. Today, the same people who gave the bad name to Mazinamdekanu in order to be kidnapped, they slandered his name, blackmailed him to other ethnic nationalities in Nigeria, all of them today has come to say that Mazinamdekanu is very sensible. Now it is Simon Ekba is the problem. These people who are just evil from birth refuse to understand why Simon Ekba have decided to take this thing upon himself to liberate the people of Biafra who has been subjugated and chained with Islamic state agenda. They found themselves in a hole. They tagged us, thought in a circle because they thought that they have actually systematically conquered everybody by dividing, creating state, dividing us, changing the demography and map of Biafra people. And at the end of the day, they structured out five tiny state, called it Five Eastern States. And they say, "Let us continue to divide them." And now they tell you, "Oh, you are talking about Biafra. You are just five state in the circle." We have come to destroy their evil agenda. Today, you will understand that the plan of the Islamic state has failed. Today, the Biafra people are proudly announcing the 40 state, which is called the United State of Biafra. 40 complete state, cut across board, including in the area where they claim they were never Biafra. I have come to learn from what Biafra did wrong in 1967 to 1970. I have come to learn what Uwazrike did wrong from the time he started the Biafra movement. And I have come to learn what Mazinamdekanu did right and was in the process of doing before the plan had kidnapped him. I continue from there and today, we are where we are. They are not resting. Those IPOB Nigeria are not resting as well. Every given opportunity, they think that there is infight in the Biafra government. They will say, "Oh, their hope now is that they are fighting." And they are hoping that there is infight in the Biafra government. That is to tell you that, like we said, they are cursed. They are cursed and they can never rise again. Biafra government in exile is a government that nobody born of a woman marching on this planet, using your foot to walk on the ground, will ever, ever destroy. Biafra has been restored in 2023. We have a government, we have a structure of the government of Biafra. We have every department that made Biafra government a legitimate government. The people of Biafra are loyal to the government, both in the exile and in the homeland. We have governors, state administrators in all the 40 states of Biafra. We have the deputy governors, which is called administrators. We have the secretary of state of each state in Biafra land. We have the chairman and managers of county and the district. If you do not understand that with this structure we have now, one day you will sleep in Nigeria and wake up in Biafra. It means that you are an idiot. I told you that by the time I finish with Nigeria, you will sleep in Nigeria one day and wake up in Biafra. The next phase is to set up the police of Biafra. The reason why we have not set up the police is because it is going to be state police. Every state will have their police. Every state will be independent. It is going to be local police and there is no interference from the central government of Biafra. The military is a joint military, is one military that will protect the territorial integrity of Biafra. When one state is attacked, it means that you have attacked all of us. So my people, for those who are asking, "When are you going to declare Biafra?" We have already declared Biafra. We are only waiting for us to conclude the last phase of the Biafra government and one day you will sleep and wake up in Biafra, like I said. Then we must capture every cranny of the Biafra.
Odeka mboni wé ombwa. Odeka mboni wé ombwa. Awale wa me tijé, bah Biafrae. Ano zimna Biafra ombwa o. Simon epon, epan joku. Oka mwa. Okemo. Okemo, mondezo, gana sopurugi. Okemo, Samone. Okemo, mondezo, gana sopuriri regio. Okemo. Okemo, edidha jiri hani le. Okemo, monile, awa. Okemo. Okemo. Kamwagi, kamwagi. Emenem retire, two thousand fourteen. But Adam Maluki, dana go ona Biafra. Adam Maluki, Bia... We are in Biafra. Ani nona Biafra. Ndelele, kina hana, nwe. Ndelele, nona may hani le, kembwe. Agaramre aputala, kembwe, kembwe, kama hua de ho nem. Munan nemano, gida na California, me buru ya lololo. Ya gawagafuru, okike ya, maloha chen, na fua. Okemo. Se wemoku, achokwa namka, kama ma achomki, ma ne buchineke. You are God, you are. Do you understand that? You are God and the other gods you walk with. I did not, I don't expect anything in life. I deal with whatever I see as I see it.
Yes.
I didn't think, I didn't put it into perspective, into any type of perspective, seeing today. And that I am seeing today, I'm experiencing today, osworum, I, I am content.
Yes.
My, my, oh my goodness, my Prime Minister, there is no name under the earth that fits you. There is no name. Chineka, brakala, no way dehau. Njoko, njoko. Onyepana aga, close to njoko, yavaku ibiti yaka, njoko.
Thank you, thank you, it's alright, I continue from there and...
Okay, so, uh... We are going now for the national anthem.
And through the crucifix, we will not skate with fast. When we avoid, the wounds of battle to heal. We shall remember those who guide us. Then shall our love, let fill the glorious song. Oh victory, we scored all might and all. Oh God, protect us from the evil people. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to lift the human's goal. To give and not to count the cost each day. Blessed are those who rule, to serve with resoluteness. To make this land a land of pride and justice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please keep standing. Please keep standing.
A minute silence for the heroes' pass and the tanks keep now. Masukie, display the other song so that when we are ready, you play it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
May the souls of all our fallen heroes continue to rest in peace. While those of us that are alive and active will continue to make sure that their labor for our freedom was never in vain. Um, we'll do that by making sure that Biafra is restored fully and our territories are all protected by ourselves. He say, he say, he say, BDF anthem, please.
Yes, yes, uh, please, just, uh... So, sorry, I think we have to play it, I don't see that right, yeah. Oh my goodness.
I thought you saved the video, but is everybody showing?
Uh, 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 sorry, just a minute, I think, uh, the video is not clicking, I see, yeah.
We can play it in audio, no problem.
This meeting is being recorded.
Play, play the audio, it was coming out weird at that time, just play it, let us hear the sound, please.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Stop sharing your screen, remove your screen and just play. Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome, uh, once again today to yet another of Aludho Town Hall meeting with our honorable APM. You are all welcome, fellow Biafrans. As always, I think we will proceed to the next in our agenda. And now we hear the opening prayer. And we are going to invite our Onyendu Mazinamdekanu to lead us in an opening prayer.
We're not going to let you go. Now, if you ever think of something, you know. When they were back, they were not going to let you go. Because they were so proud of you.
So they didn't give me anything, they didn't give me anything. He said, he said, he said.
He said, he said, thank you. Thank you, and welcome once again, honorable S. N. The House. You are welcome today, the eleventh of May, two thousand and twenty-five, to another holy fellowship. As always, I believe we all know the purpose why we gather, why we need to gather regularly. The purpose of town hall meetings is as initiated by our Prime Minister. It means to interact with the people, the grassroots, and everyone who may have bothering issues to the governance, to the issues in the state. This is an opportunity to get together, interact, present your ideas, ask questions, and hear directly from the government what they have in place for all of us, for the state. As our situation is, it's not possible for everyone of us to access the internet or the electronic media as the world enters these days. That is why we need always to gather, come together and share our ideas and also to provide solutions to the needs of our gallant men and women. You are welcome to Aludo's fourth town hall meeting, and we also greet our honorable APM and the rest of you fellow Biafrans. I will, without wasting much of our time, invite the honorable SA, honorable Emeka Oy to present his welcome address. Honorable SA, please take the mic and welcome your guest.
Wow. I'm in trouble with network. We are hearing you loud and clear. We are hearing you loud and clear. Yes, I'm in trouble with network, I just come back, I was disconnected. And I just wanted to connect.
Uh, it's, it's, it's timely, it's timely, you know.
All right, thank you, um, I don't know where we are now.
Your welcome address.
Oh, great, all right, okay, give me, give me seconds, let me get ready. All right, um, I am going to read out my address, I prepared this one down, let me read it out. A welcome address by the governor of Aludo, by the SA of Aludo State at a fundraising event in honor of the acting Prime Minister, Honorable Logan Kere today, eleventh of November, twenty twenty-five. Now, I would say, Your Excellency, the acting Prime Minister of Brigi, all cabinet members here present, distinguished guests, fellow patrons, ladies and gentlemen. At this with deep humility and profound sense of duty that I welcome you all once again to Aludo for this spot, Aludo Brigi fundraising. Am I being heard? Loud and clear.
Clear.
All right. Today gathering is not only a testament to our collective will to pursue the freedom of our people, but also symbolic expression of unity amidst the storm that beset our young nation. Your Excellency, your presence here today in the heart, in the heart of Aludo State is a strong statement of solidarity, a message that despite the challenges we face, the leadership of our new nation stands shoulder to shoulder with its people. On behalf of the entire Aludo citizens, I say you are welcome. Sorry, I was thrown out again, can you hear me?
Yes, you can, you can hear you now.
Am I, am I, am I on back? Yeah, welcome back, welcome, I hear you loud and clear. All right, okay, let me continue from where I started. Uh, we meet at a time of great sabotage, deep pain, and rising tension across our towns and villages. Insecurity threatens the peace we so dearly yearn for. The terrorist occupation forces pretending to pursue peace and of order in our territory have left trace of destruction, fear and grief. And our people cry out not just for bread and shelter, but for justice, dignity, and the right to live without fear. Colonial fingerprints still stains the fabric of our political reality. By coning design, internal discourse has been planted like weed amongst us. Brothers now turns against brother, while the true adversary watches with quiet satisfaction. This must end. We must reawaken our consciousness and remember that our shared struggle is not with each other, but with the forces that seek to keep us divided and subdued. This fundraising effort is not merely about resources. It is our responsibility. We raise funds to restore hope, to rebuild communities, to support displaced families and defend our land and parents, and threaten the civic institutions that will form the backbone of our value system. Let this gathering ignite a renewed sense of purpose in us all. Let us send a message beyond our borders that Aludo State and indeed our entire Biafra land is not a land to be broken, but a people determined to rise again. Together with peace, sacrifice, and vision, we shall overcome. Thank you. May God grant us freedom and peace and return to our land in due course. Thank you very much for attending. De wun.
De wun.
Thank you.
De wun.
You are welcome, you are that beautiful address. So, ah, nde Aludo Kono?
Ah.
What, Aludo Kono? Oh, mobile Africa Kono? Yes, Weno? Yes, all right, I turn, I turn already. So, um, SA, uh, please don't go far because we are still in your court uh, very soon, because one day Nepa, let them stop bothering your area. Uh, uh, we did this, yeah.
Ah, brother Nepa, I have steady light, it's not Nepa.
Uh, yes, everything, everything about, uh, 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 disturbers and breakdown have something to do with Nepa, so.
I think my own is more of a Nigerian network, telecommunications network. Uh, I have, I have stable light here.
Yes, I know, I know, I just, uh, it just, uh, worry my, uh, and when, when somebody is identified with a ba, a ba, a bad, a bad name, everything about him will be remembered with bad instances and references. So, Nepa have been known for that, for failures. So, thank you all, uh, Biafrans, uh, once again, and like always, as, uh, we all have heard from the SA, uh, from the uh, initial, uh, uh, address and the speeches, it is about support, welcoming, interaction, and knowing the test, being informed. That is all what is all about. And the importance of also townhouse meetings is also to relate to others. Not only what we hear or get in every meeting, but also to be able to relay uh, such messages or informations to others that, um, are not opportuned to be present there. So please, as you, uh, come, if you are from other states, take one of, uh, two things, uh, from here and uh, take it home and bring your people also closer to, um, uh, following up, because it's not about copying or emulating, it's about, uh, following up, doing the tests that, uh, we all have to do to achieve the necessary results. That is what town halls is all about and this gathering. Um, SA, I think, uh, you have to call up uh, somebody to present the color note for us. Um, yeah, we have, uh, Agwa, is it, Agwa, um, Namak, is it Agwa, is it?
Yes, Agwa, but I don't think he will be around at this meeting.
Uh, okay, um, somebody is, uh, desperately raising hand, is there any issue? Why Jesus?
That's it, why Jesus, I don't, yeah, he can speak now, he have, uh, he have a co-host.
Why Jesus, is there any issue? He doesn't have co-host from what I see.
Okay, okay, it's me, it's me, I just, I just raised a hand so that I can be unmuted.
All right, all right, okay, okay. You can bring your hand down, why Jesus? Um, um, Agwa, is he, is he available here?
No, he's not.
I can't see him. Uh, Namak, please, can you take up the responsibility? Present the color.
Uh, Aludo, unukwew.
Yeah.
Aludo, Aludo Kono wo.
Yeah.
Maybe, unukwew wo.
Yeah.
Ibo, mama no wo.
Yeah.
Right.
And, uh, I see, we're sa, Oji, we're sando. Uh, we're not here, I fear, it's your build, we are not afraid, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to. It's on what that you are on that, we're custody. If I were American, why you are there? Or the, and you're, I take it the responsibility. If I could, I'm against one. Is who, is who going to put here, when you go out, I phone, I can get during the whole time, and then we should have fear. I'm not sure, I want to pass, I give you a very good guest. At the same time, the color notes have the same purpose. I saw you, we're soji, we're sando. On behalf of Aludo State and the executive of the state, I hereby present the color notes. But at the same time, break the color note for our emble, emble, APM and his entourage. They're behind the sun, I mean, for this town hall meeting, he made it in together. I know look who the whole fifteen counties in Aludo, oh, there's no garage. I know look, and then many, we're how we're garage. I know look, this year, do how we're garage. I know look, the former, them, how we're garage. I know look, they, they try to hide, we don't want, you know, we don't want them, I'd be, how we're garage. On, on this note, I'm a G five, and my, I look, our SA. I'll be a garage, we're a project, we're a project, because I won, I won, we're, we have a garage, and that's a project. I have my money, wo.
Yo. Wow, thank you.
Aludo, de wun.
De wun.
Aludo Kano.
Kawa.
Yeah.
Mobile Africa, no question, oh.
Yo.
Uh, uh, reformer, give me, my, the, you know, that, sorry, you know, go, Oche. You're good, but soji. I, I would, John, I, why, I, can land, eating. Our body, John, now would be, where, Oji. The mandala, tapu dekwa, yeah, so, Aludo, mama.
Wow.
I made, I made ten thousand, I support, Oji, I'm good, sir. They were.
They were.
Yeah, but, yeah, wo, but, yeah, wo, I, I made you five thousand, I'm good, Oji. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. Uh, uh, because, uh, Namak and, why Jesus, you can also help in coordinating the, uh, with the hands and the, the reason of hands and the and identifying people, so, thank you.
Okay, honorable, I can get the hello.
Ye- yes, sir, can wo.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well.
To, 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 Aludo, can wo.
Who?
Right.
Can wo.
What?
Yeah, wow.
Yeah, though.
What?
Yeah.
Well, no.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, my, I'm supporter, my. I say, with the some of, in welcoming the A P M, uh, with the some of, um, ten thousand, A J. Ten thousand, A J. Yes.
They were.
They were. Thank you. They were, so, uh, please, uh, all, uh, Aludo indigenous, county heads and admins. Please come and pick the color knot for your county and your people. They Aludo, only be our Roger.
Yeah. I come, I, I'm gonna, on behalf of, uh, I fear, I didn't five thousand, was that I watch it? You know, ten thousand, if I need, but I just mind, I have here. Uno, uno kuwé.
Thank you very much.
They were, they were, they were, can, Namak. That's that.
Aludo, Oji, I belong to. Only be our Roger.
Uh, um, uh, I may announce updates from my end. Um, audit, um, Wada blessing, I need you. Oji, ten thousand, I support, huh? I control, yeah, another.
Okay.
You know, only, yeah, can, uno, call it, yeah, can.
A J, don't forget, A J.
We are also, we are also not in a cola eating. Cola have been broken, so you can still pick your cola note.
I am a regular candidate, I am a young man. 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 He is a well at that. So who could well at that? And he also, I don't know. You know, I am a little. He is a man. 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 And he also, I don't know. He is a man. He is a man. I think we will pull it. Oh, I think we will pull it. I am a non nono. And you go non nono. He won't know no more. And he is dead to no more. I will not know more. That's a no no more. Oh, I did go no no more. I will not do.
We are also, we are also not in a cola eating. Cola have been broken, so you can still pick your cola note.
I'm a regular candidate, I am a young man. 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 Oh, I keep going, I am a little. He level one you. He go for some. I, I need to, I need to on a screen. He can not. He not. He not because he level one you. I, I am a young man. I am a young man. He not. Yes, I'll give you the next item on the agenda.
So, thank you, thank you. So, um, cola note, um, I think, uh, I will also, uh, take cola note with fifty Ajema for Imeni.
Good. Town, you know, for Savano. Defend your county. We have fifty, fifteen counties.
Today, every, everybody here must identify which his or her county.
Hmm, defend your county, defend your county.
Yeah, today, be, be ready to identify your county or your state is coming up. So please, cola note, cola note, cola note. We are eating the.
Me, I want to. Oh, oh, my county. Oh, my county, you know, for Savano. There were.
Oh, I'm not a blame, many care, well, Roger. Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, 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 by the, oh, but can do, oh, oh, my county.
Uh, yes, I think you may mention on one and the US, US.
My, 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 my. Okay, okay. United States of America, North and South.
Uh, but I had a mention also, oh, Mona.
Yellow, yellow Mona.
Uh? Oh, my, oh, my, you cannot know, so, because, because, uh, come up or, uh, uh.
Come, come, yellow, come, hello, Mona.
Okay, USA, no, no, Mona.
Bridgie USA, like.
Oh, Mona, yes, I think I had, I had.
I go for no Mona, I can't. I know what's it for that. It not for county, I, I, I can't represent, yeah, for sure.
So, uh, yes, uh, honorable send the house while waiting for, uh, county members that are still stopped in a hold up. So the cola note is open for everybody, please. It's not only meant for Aludo people. It is a color of life. Everyone of us here, uh, have to share with the life, with the cola note. So please, uh, I want you to identify to be a part of us. Come and pick a cola note.
And so, if from another state, you can still pick your, with cola on behalf of your state. In there, one.
Normally, as the evil culture, uh, enters, we are supposed to even take this cola note. Now, can I get to every representative, yeah? Uh, okay, honorable, go on.
Yeah, scan over.
Can.
Yes, on behalf of Abama, I'm, I'm not a Roger. With the sum of, um, five thousand Ajema, Ajema. No, you say.
Abam county, Abam county.
Yes, so.
There were.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You are welcome. I did, I did this, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
Take my time, take my time.
Yes, uncode the number. And there, you are welcome.
Abamo, Jago, Le, Roger.
Five thousand Ajema.
Uh, Aludo Penny.
Wow. Yeah.
Yeah. Wow.
The land of peace, best you only.
Wow.
Aludo, Darren, Darren, you say.
Yeah, wow.
Yes, I can, I can, madu.
Abam Bonon Abadi. Thank you so much, Aludo, you are making their friend proud. Thank you so much. Um, uh, on behalf of, um, on behalf of the Mewu State, of the Mewu.
Of the Mewu, yeah.
Twenty Ajema.
Abam, 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 how much?
Twenty Ajema.
Five thousand.
Twenty Ajema. On behalf of.
Of the Mewu.
It's twenty Ajema.
Control, I got twenty Ajema. Twenty Ajema. Control, I got.
Is it, is it? Uh, uno, uno, control. Ajema. Uh, children, children, I'm also the record. Oh, no, I need to, Ajema.
Uncode the number from, uh,
Uncode the number.
Of the Mewu State.
Code the number.
From the Mewu State.
Welcome, madu.
Well, Roger. When I, when I, when I party, Ajema, I will on behalf of the Mewu State. When I say, but the Mewu State, uh, Anabata, um, eight P M on June first, Darren. June first.
Ah, I'm, we call this a vara, you know, change. This is a, this is a vara, dude.
I, I.
We fully represented.
So, what I like, Roger, there were forty Ajema, Ajema, of the Mewu and the.
Roger.
Yeah.
No. Forty Ajema for Roger. Both, uh, chief, uncode the number, honorable, uncode the number. Minister, uncode the number and, uh, of the Mewu State. Thank you.
All right, uh, what of Abam, Abam?
Abam, five thousand. Five thousand Ajema.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you, um, I, I could tell them, uncode the number, I can be called, I can, I can.
Go for none, none.
I call it.
More than a name, may I, they may, and they are not hard job.
But children, I.
May I, special lego.
May I go them, I be, I, who you through you go them, ma?
Uh.
It's okay. Who's that, call it, see, but I will, I will also. I'm very, that, that, you're, I, 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 Billy, Kono, I, Bob, Billy, S. And that, nature, mobile, country, representative. Yeah, no, Roger, and that, I do, go, sir.
Come and pick the color, come and eat the color. A P Maga by the original Fala. He's on tour, he's our visitor, he's not going back with any of the color notes. The color is meant to be eating. So please come and pick your color notes, come and eat your color notes with the A P. So while, um, what does, can you, uh, let me see, uh, how prepared the A P M is? Uh, can you, uh, keep the hall moving, let me see if A P M is ready for.
I got the hello, I got the hello.
Uh, please let them in. Oh, I know what you're gonna have, uh, uh, mute to pick the color, I think, uh, no, there's no hand raised. Can I, yeah, can I do this?
Okay, on the hacker, on the hacker, don't worry, on the hacker, they should remove the pin. I will go and log her in. About Jojo. I'm your neighbor to talk.
Yes, I want to make a short call, can you just continue with the moder- with the moderation, please? Please call a note, uh, we are just, uh, uh, waiting for the A P M to, for his address. But let me see if I'll get him, I don't know if he's close to his gadget. Please call a note, call a note, come and pick your color notes. Aludo have broken the color notes. It's meant for everyone.
There one on. Welcome.
Yeah, one.
There were.
No, also, you're welcome, welcome, A P M.
I don't know why, uh, echo. Is it from me?
Uh, let me see from whose end. Uh, all my, all my case is muted here, it can be from you.
A P M, there were, I greet you, welcome.
Yeah, yeah.
There were, um, greeting from here, good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good evening, good evening from this side. No, sir, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir, so, behalf of France, A P, um, behalf of France, Republic of Martin, Azar, is about to address you, please. Put your ears down. And listen, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Honorable O K O, thank you, and, uh, thanks the Aludo, Adme and the Executive. Thank you, fellow behalf friends. As we always do, we always remember those before us. Our leader, Odumogujuku. And our leader, Philip Pheum. We appreciate all they have done for us. And the example they set before us. Educating us, the need to fight for freedom. The reason why we deserve to be free. And we follow their footsteps. And emulate everything that they have done. Thank you. We remember our leader, Mazinamdekan. Just few days ago, the Nigerian terrorist country, they took Biafra to court, not our leader. When our leader, anytime, any day, he appear in court, it's Biafra that appear in court. So if you don't know, know that, so when you say you're sitting at home for our leader Mazinamdekan, that is wrong. We are sitting at home for Biafra freedom. Because we are doing it for our freedom. If it is not for Biafra, or if it is not for fighting for our freedom, I don't see any reason why I would be sitting at home. Sitting, sitting at home is to send a clear message, a signal of people who want their freedom. So sitting at home is what the Biafra people have, uh, have decide to do, to send their message across our global community. We appreciate our leader Mazinamdekan for all he's doing. I believe we love him. I believe we all know what he stands for. A lot of people that are shouting, oh, you're doing, you're doing today. When he was here preaching, 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 to a time, he said, he can't be here. He's tired of preaching, he wants action. Some of them mock him, some never believe in him. Some never believe that he's a Messiah to stay with the African nation. But today, they call his name, they sing praises on the same man, that leader, that they despise. Our Prime Minister Mazie Simon Ebon. That is, uh, uh, that the Finnish Authority head for the so-called question, the same thing happened. They call him name, casual him. Try to hold him accountability of all corner. Accuse him of what? A crime he never committed. At the time, they accuse him, saying that he work, uh, with the Nigerian state. At the time, they accuse him that Tunubu paid him. There is no manner of accusation. The same people that accuse him, call him all these name. Today, they are calling our P M, our P M, but when he was here with us, they did not really value him much, or treat him like he deserved. I don't know why it's a pattern, but we need to change narrative. My fellow citizens of Aludo, we are here today again. Still preaching the gospel. We will not stop. We will be saying it the way it is. Until our people wake up to do the right thing. Freedom is not taking. I'm sorry, freedom is not given, it's taken. Take your freedom. For any international, uh, international community, we come to support or to help us, we have to first initiate. We have to first show the readiness that we are ready to go. We have to first show the readiness as a people. My fellow behalf friends. We have those that are piloting the affair of this movement. Which is the Brigay government. The Brigay government comprises of our behalfers, both those that are sitting at home. They are all part of the government, because the government is our government. And we must respect the government, as long as the government is all of us government, and support the government. And stop to casual this government indirectly. And stop to hold this government accountability where there is no accountability. And stop to manufacture anything that would discredit what we are doing. We have a lot of behalf friends that, uh, that have seized this opportunity. Blogging with this, uh, our restoration cost, using the issue of Biafra to profit and gain themselves. Most people there, out there, in the media, that call themselves content creators. They are not supporting it. They are just using it for their own stomach infrastructure. They are using it to make money for themselves, to benefit themselves. And if you are Biafra, doing that, please kindly disease from me. Because the land of Biafra and the people of Biafra would never forgive you. The air you drink, the air you breathe will work against you. The water you drink will turn to poison. The food you eat will turn to poison. As long as you have come to kill us, nothing good will come your way. The Africans have been killed in millions. Enough is enough. If you are one of those in the media, believing you are media personnel, campaigning, talking about Biafra, the upright. You are using Biafra to make money, maybe by broadcasting, do the right thing. Stop propaganda, stop lying against the Biafra people and the government. Do what is right, so you will be blessed. If not, all your lives, you will live in life of agony. You will regret why you are created or why you are in this world. Because Biafra people, our heart is broken. We have been killed in millions. And some of the people that are supposed to use their media channel to do the writing, they are using it to profit themselves, to gain themselves, because they monetize it just to make money. We are not saying you cannot use your channel to make money, but as long as you are doing that, you can even use the money to support the liberation. A lot of these media that are still using the issue of our freedom, Biafra freedom, to profit themselves. They, they hardly contribute to our freedom financially. And they are making money every month from it. Rather, they want to talk about whether if our defense is doing enough, whether we are doing enough, or they are not seeing what we are doing. How will you see what we are doing if you are not supporting? You have to support as a Biafra. We, Biafra people, are sending a strong warning and a message to every media personnel. Whether you are content creator, whether you are blogging or whatsoever, whether you are independent media, or private media, or whatever media. Use your platform to glorify the cause of Biafra. Use your platform to save the life of your people. You can still be making your money while using it, we have nothing against monetizing your platform. Maybe that's only how you'll be able to survive financially. But don't sabotage what we are doing. Because a lot of you believe that you know it all. A lot of the medias believe they are the voice of the Biafra people. But in actual sense, indirectly, whether they know or they don't. They are sabotaging what we are doing. As long as you are sabotaging what we are doing, you are a saboteur. You are fighting against our freedom, one way or the other way. Please. So that you won't cry, have I know. Our heart is bleeding. Every day, we talk to our people how to wake up, we yell, yell, yell with our loud voice. We try to voice it out while we speak. We try to signal to our people, so they can know we need to save our land. Why you still have some among us, they seize the opportunity to profit from it. They seize the opportunity to use their voice, the voice they're supposed to use to save our people. The voice they're supposed to use to educate behalf friends. They need to rise up, they need to wake up. Some believe when they speak the truth, they won't have enough viewers, they won't make enough money at the end of the month. So they better come with all kinds of propaganda, because the Nigerian terrorist states have thousands of people, they have paid to fight us through social media network, of which a lot of them go to these different platforms to praise them, to sing praises, to make it seem like they are doing the right thing. What will it profit you? When you gain the whole world and you lose your dear land of Biafra. What will it profit you? When you make all the money and you allow the terrorist country to kill your families, to kill your people. What is your gain? Those of you in the media, all of you that are watching, you all know what I'm talking about. Stop deceiving yourself. Stop faking, be real and be real person. We are not working with ghosts. Be man enough. We need to know who you are, show that you are real and you are fighting for Biafra. You people have deceived us enough. And for the genuine Biafra freedom fighters, shine your eye. Know the source of your information. Know the source of your network. Know who you listen to. Bad associations were good for habit. If you listen or you watch fake news all day, you will start reasoning. Start thinking, or start taking in, because in you, inside your memory, everything will be revolve around what you watch or what you listen to. Automatically, that fake news will turn to good news, will be real news. Your source of channel, your source of news can change your life for good or for worse. We live in a world where social media pave or change the narrative, how people think. That is why during election, during the campaign, any party that is campaigning, they spend a lot of money, like here, United States of America. Sometimes they spend millions of dollar to a billion or plus of dollar in commercial, in media. Because for the people to know what is going on, they get their information from social media. So all you social media personnel, if you think Biafra is not going to totally be liberated, you are joking. If you think what we are doing is not real, you are joking. And if you decide to use your platform to sabotage Biafra people, to kill Biafra people, be ready. That land of Biafra will swallow you. If you step your faith in the land of Biafra, that land will deal with you. If not now, in near future. And wherever you are around the world, wherever you broadcasting from, everything, everything of nature will walk against you. Anything you ever desire, you ever ask for, you will not get it. Because you have killed the people of God. Because you have killed Biafrans. Our heart is bleeding with pain, agony. We saw what is happening in Biafra land every day. From the Minister of Rintana Affair, I don't know how many of you that have seen, uh, been to her page. And you will see the tweet. What is happening in Biafra land? How the terrorist country is bombing and killing innocent Biafra. And if you tell me you are true Biafra, after seeing all this, you think it's okay, it is not. We also saw what happened yesterday in Bakasi Peninsula. The Nigerian terrorists, they have been colluding with the Cameroon terrorists. They have a joint task force in that areas. Of which yesterday, the Biafrans able to bring down one of their, one of their fighter jet out of the train. The other two, nobody asked them, would they even know how, how they flew from that area? They turn around, because if they have waste more time, all three will be down. We are fighting a war, that the war that I want to talk about. CNN of fake news, I want to talk about it. BBC fake news, I want to talk about it. Channel Television of the Zulu terrorist country, I want to talk about it. Arise, I want to talk about it, all these gutter useless shit hole media. They don't talk about it. Can you tell me any reason why shooting down one of the jet? For, uh, one of the jet out of the train from the, uh, Cameroon, joint task with the Nigerian terrorist country, and no major news carried. What does that tell you? We have enemy on our right side, left side, back and front, even within this fight we have, this war that they have brought to us. We are not backing down, we are not going back, we are not retrieving. We will fight to the finish. We will do everything humanly possible to make sure we secure our freedom. Because freedom is not given, freedom is taken. Every day, we watch our media team doing the new, educating Biafra people. Talking to the Biafra people what to do. Nothing that been said today, nothing that I'm saying now, that our leader Mazinamdekan have never said. No kind of grammar or English that I'm speaking, that our leader Mazinamdekan have not spoken. And we all know that is highly educated as well, for those that are accountability of grammar and English. Is there any kind of English you have not heard from our leader Mazinamdekan? We shall feel that is more educated than him. And a lot of people still refuse to do the right thing. A lot still refuse to listen. But we can see that this great prophet, everything he have said, over ninety percent have come to pass. Some does still want to believe. And for the politicians, the illegitimate politicians, that are still parading themselves in Biafra land. Every day I do assure them, if they think it's okay, that everything is alright, it is not, it's not okay, we will deal with them. I don't know how they feel, I don't know how they able to sleep. After bringing? Working with the Nigerian terrorists to come and kill? Their own? To come and kill Biafrans? I don't know how? They sleep at night? I don't know what family they come from? Even their family member, by extension, uncle, nephew, cousin, whatever? Can't even talk to them? Sit them down? Lecture them, educate them, the reason why? They should support? And fight for our freedom? Shame unto all of them? Shame to them? Biafrans, I'm still using this opportunity? We are pleading with everyone? That is still waiting until our leader Mazinamdekan is released, or our prime minister is released? Before they will start to support? Our freedom, which is their freedom as well? Please? Don't wait before it is too late? What we are doing now? We actually help them? We actually help their release as well? If we all decide to step aside and wait? That means? We are not going to talk about Biafra anymore? Please, we plead with everyone? Whatever? That you been offended one way or the other way? Just let it go? Come and support your freedom? We have one common enemy? The Nigerian terrorist country? And the Fulani ginger weed terrorist blood sucking demos? They are our enemy? Come all, let us all fight together? If you hold your phone back not to support? This freedom? Remember? It's not just my freedom? It's not just the Briggy government freedom? It's not just the Biafra people's freedom? It's your freedom you are holding? It's your freedom as well? If you want results? If you wanted today, tomorrow, for us to be free totally? So we can chase our enemy out of our land? Why holding back the fund? The liberation fund? If we all hold back our fund without supporting our freedom? How do you think we will be able to fight our enemy? Are we going to fight our enemy with blowing whistle? Are we going to fight our enemy with bare hands? We see what going on? Between United States of America? How they deal with the Houthis? They did not do that with their bare hand? There's a logistic, what you use for war or what you use to fight? Why Israel is dealing with Hamas? They did not do that with bare hand? Russia and Ukraine, in the other hand? They are not fighting with whistle? They are not blowing whistle everywhere to win their war? Pakistan and India? We can see the missile flying front and back? Not with bare hand? It costs money, a German? If you are a true Biafra? And you have the Biafra blood in you? And all you care about is accountability? Shame unto you? I want you to care about results! I want you to care about what you see that we are doing? Care about the activity of this government? For the past two years? We have graduated? That we able to conduct? Our referendum and re-declare our country, Biafra? And it's time to fund? To fund the angels that are liberating our land? What you need to worry about? How to take care of them? What do they need? How are they going to fight? If they have not have the logistic? To bring one of these jet fighter down yesterday? Do you think? We achieve that? We cannot achieve that by blowing whistle? We cannot achieve that with martial? We can achieve that by getting the right logistic? All this accountability group shame unto all of you? Right from get-go, our leader Mazinamdekan have was condemned? It never yet fruit? Rather it caused pain, agony? It caused division? We trust all the personnel that are working for the Biafra people? Without trust, we going nowhere? A lot have sacrificed? Our leader Mazinamdekan who lost his parents because of this cost? We have a lot of our angels, our commanders? They have lost their life, their family because of this cost? A lot of our family members, mothers, children? They are in IDP camp today? A lot have been bombed even yesterday? Even when the Cameroon joint task force with the Nigerian terrorists? Yesterday? There's some bombing? And burning? By the Bakasi Aziz? While we have some of our men also wounded? They need to be taken care of as well? Let's focus, set our eyes on the prize? Let's look at our achievements? We have grown from nothing? To something? In Washington DC, our president is there already? They talk about us? They always ask question about? Territories that we have already liberated, how things are going? They want to know how serious we are? If whether they are ready? To support us, it depend on us? Fellow Biafrans, please, let's love one another? Let's do what is right? And appreciate every genuine freedom fighter? Appreciate everyone? That hold this cause so dear? Appreciate? Nothing wrong to appreciate him who have sacrificed? To make sure? This movement continue? Nothing wrong to appreciate? Every genuine that is doing the right thing? We are not saying appreciate them financially? Word of encouragement? Is good as well? Showing support is good as well? Instead of undermining our efforts? With unity, we can move mountains? With love? We can do it all? Biafra? I will tell you that? If I, Mazyogu Chukunkiri? If I can do it alone, if I can, I'm not saying I can? Because of, uh, we have a lot of enemies? That they will change what I said now to something else? I said this sometime last year during my interview with the media team? That I said? If I have the money? To even single-handedly? Deliver Biafra from our enemies, I will do it? Some use that word of contest and turn it around? No, what I meant is that if I have it? I will do anything? Anything to make sure I use that? To save our dear nation? Our leader Ojuku did that? He set example? Of humanity? Of a leader who love his people? He used the words? Of his father? May he still rest in peace? To fight for his dear nation? I don't know why a lot of? Our Biafrans are holding back? We have millionaires and billionaires? Are they waiting until this enemy we get to them? Remember? Now that we need this fund to be able to free ourselves? If these people overrun our land and you all from Enoson, Nubikubana? Emoni, all these people? If you're gonna start coming with your money when it's too late? Maybe then we're not gonna be able to get any logistic? Don't come when it's too late? This is the right time that you all can come? Let's fund our freedom? Let us all get our freedom? Because in Biafra land, you will have the opportunity? Your business will strive? To the highest level? The sky will be your limit? Because we will have good security? We'll have everything that will make your business compete with the outside world? Not like now? The country called Nigeria? Always suppress all the business tackle? From Biafra land? Like somebody like Ibeito? They try the best they can to make sure Ibeito go out of business? They are trying the best they can to make sure Enoson Mo to go out of business as well? They are trying the best they can? Alan O'Neyman, CEO of Air Peace? All the business owners from Biafra land? The Nigerian terrorist country, they are trying the best they can to bring them down? But in Biafra? We'll make sure we treat our own with respect? We'll make sure? They enjoying? And do business? As it's supposed to be? And we all, we have a, a good handshake? Please, my fellow Biafrans? It is time for all of us to come together? Unite and do the right thing? When we talk about unite, unity of Biafra? When we talk about Biafra unites to come and unite together? We are Biafra need to unite? We would display that by supporting the government that is piloting the affair? We would display that by supporting the Briggy? That is the backbone of everything we are doing now? That's only how we can unite? We cannot be talking about Biafra unity? While we are destroying the unity? While we are destroying everything that's supposed to make it work? By joining? The process? Please, I'm gonna, uh, come back? I still have few more word to touch on? Please? Send message to every Biafran? That is time for them to come? Let us all unite? Let us all Biafra unite? If you are talking about Biafra unite, you are not uniting Biafra, you are sub... If you are talking about Biafra unite? You are not uniting Biafra? And you are sabotaging Biafra? Wherever you are? Everything will work against you? Nature will work against you? Be real and fight for the freedom of Biafra? And for all the bloggers, just as I said earlier, and body? Uh, content creators? That are making money? From talking about Biafra? Please? Report the accurate news? Don't betray what we are doing? If not? Everything? Will work against you wherever you are? Thank you fellow Biafrans? Please remember we are at war? If the war don't come to our rescue, we will rescue ourselves? And when the world see how resilient we are? When the world see how we are fighting our back? We will have allies? But it break my heart? That a lot of Biafrans are not waking up? Knowing that we are at war? If we are not at war? Why we the Cameroonian and the Nigeria have a joint task to come and bomb? Biafrans and kill Biafrans? Of which we brought one of their? Uh, fighter jet down? They should come, we are waiting for them? Anything that flies must come down? And the aid we can on? All our enemy within, all the subos, Azay, governor? Anyone we can lay our hand on? We would deal with that person? What they are preventing us from getting? Like Musa have said it? Tamper with their fund? Try to block the source of their fund? Put confusion within them? Are we going to allow Musa to succeed? That will never happen? Our Prime Minister Mazzy Simon Ebarcan do not? Our leader Mazinamdekan do not? We are their hope? We are they are, our action will free them? We let, we need to show the world, let the world know? That even without them in our midst now? The Biafran struggle continue? The Biafran people say no, we must be free? Even if they arrest all of us? We can never surrender? We can never give up our land? In eighteen oh three? In Georgia, Atlanta, we all heard about what happened? When our fellow heroes? Decided to start a way? Besleve? They drowned? We Biafrans? We can never besleve? And we can never besleve in our land? Oneyabulunu Pataraka, whoever that is subo among you? Do whatever you can in your own way? Whoever that have come to kill you? Kill that person first? That means that person don't mean well? For us or for you? It's called self-defense? Thank you fellow Biafrans? In the way?
Thank you, thank you Honorable APM? Thank you? We are loved to have you? At this wonderful speech, as always? Telling us what we should do, what we should have done? But, uh, it's unfortunate that many of us? Um, are still sleeping? Still don't want to wake up? And many have woken up, but instead? Decide to remain lying down? And before I continue, I think you deserve a little? In your saliva? Biafran, that is the? Yes, Washington, I just come in. Thank you. That is wonderful word from our APM? The passion is as always burning in him? How God gave us these three young men? Our leader Oneyenduma Mazinamdekan? Our Prime Minister? our Prime Minister Mazin Simon Ebar Joko, and now our APM Mazie Ogenkere. Each given to us in the right time. What else do we want? What else do we want from God? What other way do we want our prayers to be answered? Other than to do the needful that is expected of us? This sound is for all of us. While we dance, let us put hands in our pockets and pray. We are dancing with the APM. Eh, do di ki je.
We wanna use the opportunity to appreciate all our mothers.
Thank you.
We respect them, we love them, we hold them so dear. Without them, we're not going to be in this world. And we pray that we all make it to Biafra land so we can all enjoy this beautiful world together. We love you all our mothers, all our home mother. Especially all the pioneers, our mothers that have been piloting their faith and part of this great movement, we appreciate all of you. We love you all. Without our mothers, we can do nothing. We love them, we hold them so dear. Wanna say thank you all. Thank you, thank you. Please, if you have not be part of this great motherhood, kindly join and be part of it. Our leader Mazin Namdekanu once talked about it and said when our mothers join our freedom, Biafra here and Biafra will be here. So we call out all the genuine mothers and the non-genuine ones to please kindly come to our rescue, kindly come to save Biafra land, which is our motherland. You have not been supporting and you one of our mother, please support financially, spiritually, physically or otherwise. The word is described as mother. Our motherland must be protected. Our motherland is our land. Our mothers remain our mothers. It's time for our mothers to show they are the mother of the land. It's time for the mother of the land to not show their children, to take care of their offspring, sorry. Mothers are still dear to us. We love you, our mother. Please, if you're one of our mothers and you have not been doing the right thing, kindly keep in, join the fruitful, good motherhood so that your name will be written in golden pen. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you once again, APM. I did not eh, it through my nobi, that is because I wanted to appreciate our mothers. Please, don't that have their hands up, please don't take it down. Let us appreciate our mothers, just as APM rightly interjected. Thank you very much and thank you all our sweet mothers, especially from our APM to you. Without your help, without your protection, without your guidance, we will never be grown up to do what we are doing today. So, thank you. So Mazin, we have eaten kola nut before, but the kola nut is still ongoing. And as you all know, we are eating kola nut with the APM. Mazie, Honorable Mazie Onyeze, I think you are first, please pardon me.
Mazie, Mazie okay, Honorable okay. Both eating kola nut and donation, let it happen at the same time, please.
Yes, that's exactly what I mean. And that is what I'm trying to explain, that we have eaten it and we are continuing with a both combined. But yeah, kola nut, picking kola nut for those who are not here and the important APM's speech. But to you know, thank you very much. So please, if I miss out the orderly, as you raise your man, pardon me. I did not, because so, Onyeze, I think you should go first. And Honorable Awara, you are welcome, you are welcome on board. You can enjoy the APM was addressing, so you are highly welcome. Onyeze, please, go on. Okay, sorry, unmute yourself.
Good evening all once again.
Good evening, Onyeze.
My APM, I thank you very specially, very wonderful man. Very good leader, we appreciate you mostly, thank you so much. I have announced one of our, Ezine, Ezine love God, announced you today as you contributed to the Aludho fundraiser. Five thousand Ajemma and me, two thousand Ajemma. I want to add again, Wada Abigail. Ezine Wada Abigail, today is Ezine day, so we are celebrating all our mothers. Ezine, Ezine Abigail, thirty Ajemma in support of Aludho today. We are still waiting for that, so there were.
Uh, please, uh, Um, Onyeze Biko, say this thing, is it five thousand Ajemma, two thousand Ajemma? Let me understand so that we can record it well.
The former one I announced before was five thousand Ajemma and two thousand Ajemma.
Okay, thanks for Ezine.
Ezine, love God, five thousand Ajemma.
Yes, that is twelve thousand.
And me, two thousand Ajemma. But now I am announcing, now, now I'm announcing Ezine Abigail, thirty Ajemma.
Okay.
Yeah, two Ezines now, two Ezines, the first one Ezine love God and now Ezine Abigail.
Yes, two Ezines from a where state, Owokeba.
Yes.
Owokeba.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, well done, thank you.
Thank you. So Mazie Nande, Anasike.
Anasike.
Anasike, unmute yourself, thank you.
My behalf.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Mazie, greetings to you.
Thank you, Non and Devo.
Yeah, and Devo, Aludho, Nda Dulu. Our APM, special salute. We are doing, we are doing, they are doing their network, they are making us proud. Without wasting our time, I just want to support our APM's Thunderous Speedway, twenty thousand Ajemma. I'll send the money.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Bless you, bless you.
Mazie, encode the number.
Thank you so much, APM, thank you so much for your good work. I want to tell you that we are strongly, have confidence in you. You will deliver, you make us proud, make our promise a proud, make Biafran proud. We stand with you. I also want to say, I want to say to our mothers, Happy Mother's Day, Happy Mother's Day. On behalf of all the major states, that will be welcoming you on first of two. Our, uh, um, uh, supporting and celebrate, join you supporting, celebrating our mothers with fifty Ajemma.
Wow. Wow, wow, wow. Okay, sorry, 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 sorry. Sorry, 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 pardon, pardon.
In the blessing you are landing, come, as a tale, go to boot, come and do that eh.
Don't worry, I think.
The blessing you are landing, Biafrans, okay? I will send this of ninety Ajemma to Honorable Awara, definitely tomorrow, okay?
Thank you very much, you are welcome, you are welcome. So iPhone. Because I want your man this iPhone, because I don't know if he is. I don't know if he was identified before.
Na mi o, sorry.
Now you be who? Now you be who, can I document?
Barry, thank you Luca, Barry, thank you Luca.
Welcome man, welcome man, welcome man.
I won't kill you, iPhone is the one free, iPhone is the one. No, that is, I muted iPhone, then kill us now, we are one now.
I don't watch here, I don't watch here, I'm careful.
I'm careful.
Okay, that's what I do, you are welcome.
My people, all right, we can support Honorable APM's speech with fifty Ajemma for this my account.
Thank you very much, thank. Oma Ajemma, don't worry, they go here. They go here, they go here. How much I want, how much, how much, how much, that you see like burning fire, that is how it happen. You happen, thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now who is, I think iPhone is down. Okay, freedom for all, Kiru, you have. Let the other speaker finish, then you get your music. Freedom for all. What is happening there? I think this freedom for all is a suspect.
Oh, what are, oh, what are two systems on, where about your one?
Okay, okay. Okay, I, I, I just now. Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, okay, good evening, Biafrans. Good evening all over, good evening everybody. I, I, I've been very happy today, at least, moving on a little bit. I will only, as John, in our support, on behalf of Nduja, animal support to Aludho with Ajemma.
A mayor station because on my, for the animal, go look at that.
Oh, thank you very much, um.
Fifty Ajema.
Fifty Ajema, thank you, thank you, and please, please, where, where are you based? Sorry?
I'm a male, I'm a U K.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, okay, can you just give it up, can you just get your receipt, may I may remit?
I think one, thank you. Okay.
Bunny face.
With, with this name, I'll give me, I'll, I'll give me identified, I will only tell him a freedom for all. No, this in the bridge, bridge, I cannot recognize the voice.
Okay, okay. First, we're not gonna send there now, 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 I'm gonna, uh, uh, going to, to do a bunny face, do a bunny face.
Uh, okay, because I've been difficult to, um, to identify the voice, that is a problem, that is a problem, because you are, this in the bridge. I'm going, go on, they go and the bridge, it's not coming out clear.
No problem.
No, I better, okay, that is, thank you, that is, I will, I'll get, I'll get him, I'll tell him, I'll contact Bunny Face. Imena, thank you, thank you, you are welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Madan Kiru, uh, can you take down your hands, please?
Yeah, yeah, but whatever has such a.
Okay, can, anyone has something, can I? Call the number, your hand is still up.
Okay.
Eighty Ajema.
Remit immediately.
Oh, okay. Yeah, oh, okay, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Okay, okay, can you help?
I say plus thirty, so altogether eighty Ajema.
Kiru, Kiru Abi?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much, thank you very much.
So I P M just finished addressing us. And there is also something I want to point out in some of the points that he raised. It took me back to religious people. There is this lesson we we are taught by uh by uh Christ. The parable of the Sowa. I think many of us must have uh read that or come across it. The parable of the Sowa taught us about a certain merchant. On his trip, he dish out some dough, some money to his servants. He gave some hundred thousand, he gave others fifty thousand, he gave some even one billion. Maybe naira, it could be naira because then what is happening today must have happened then. So it could be naira that he gave out to these people. Some he gave, I think, ordinary ten thousand. All of them were supposed to invest with this money, these funds given to them. Ironically, the one that got the highest of the sums, what did he do? I think he just dug ground and buried the money, the money giving to, giving to him. Saying that he will save this money until the master come back. The master will now held in that he preserved this money given to him. The others, he gave hundred thousand, also invested, but did not invest it rightly. But the one that got the least of the amount was the one who invested that money properly and generated enormous return. The funny thing in that teaching is that he that was, that more was expected from did nothing. The others did presumably a little, very little. Oh, believing, yeah, they were loved, they were given enough money, they can do it. And when the master, when the master come, at least he will be satisfied that the money was not lost. But the one that got least was the one who invested that money. That is exactly where we are today. Behalf France, many of us were entrusted to do much. But we decided to keep lying. We remain where we are, hoping when the master came out, our premier, our prime minister. Those are our masters that are now in Italy. And they have invested so much on us, hoping and believing that when they come back, we will present them a befitting return. So please, don't sit back. Don't still think you are going to wait until Onyekwu come out. You are going to wait until Prime Minister come out and he will come out to do what? To love you for doing nothing? No, they are not going to be happy with you. Now is the time for you to show them the love, the resilience that they have been teaching us about. Come out now and do the needful so that these men will be proud of us when they come out. Better still, we have no reason to abandon our soldiers. That is what it's all about. Please, for many of us that have been going to judge, that is the parable of the Sowa. For you, it's happening today. Invest and invest justly for your master to love you. Thank you, behalf France, honorable. Emelika. You're welcome. Your hand has been up.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, yes. Thank you, honorable Oke. There were. Yes, my A P M is always on the ball, he's always on the point. And the point he has made today, you know, has always been what we needed to know. Well, many of us know this, but some of us are pretending we don't know. And I thank him for stressing those points. And um on behalf of Omona and also Bridge U S A L also were coming with that speech with the sum of a hundred Ajma, making it two hundred Ajma today.
Oh, no.
Thank you very much.
I will call you after, honorable Emelika, when you tell me the express way to start. I'm coming, I'm coming the others in this night.
And I will send you your receipt in a minute.
Thank you.
Or Omona?
O- Omona.
Okay.
Alai.
Yes.
Weke. Ezuku is Omona. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, honorable.
All praises, all praises.
Yes. Uh so, why Jesus, if you are done with your question, you put down your hand, please, and let Onyese go on.
Why Jesus, have you seen your question on the screen?
Yeah, your question is out in the screen. Maoria, we need to read them.
Yes, you are going, you are going on the right, then you are going answer.
Okay, um another update from where it states. Mat Mwa, five thousand Aj. Is anybody hearing me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And we are still coming.
Mazie Onye.
Mat Mwa. Mat, M A T H.
Again.
Mat Mwa, five thousand Aj.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you, thank you, Mazie Mat. Thank you. So um uh Namak, are you trying to join? Or because I I don't understand why you're going off and on? Are you the one or?
I guess network.
Uh just guide each other now or one of those trying to. Uh okay, so uh thank you, thank you, Onyese. Please, more hands up and there is a a puzzle here. You can see it on the screen. Why Jesus want answer to this question? If you know it, you would come up. If you answer it correctly, he will pay five thousand Aj for you. If you get it wrong, well, anyway, I won.
Mazie Emelika, your hand is still up.
I think it's the odd one.
Thanks. Onyese, your hand is still on? Good.
Great. Well, and support the A P M speech, support his tour to allude support our liberation forces. As I beg, I want to support A P M's uh speech with fifteen thousand Aj, please.
Oh, well done. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Uh uh uh.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Please, A P M, but please, it's not going into A P M's box or pocket, as we all know. This is for our liberation, this is for our gallant men and women. So if you hear A P M, don't think uh it's about A P M. Please, this is support for our liberation. Out and support our gallant men and women. And why Jesus, the answer to your question is one to one.
One to one.
One to one.
Okay. Because if if we look at.
I bring the other, I, okay, I think Uncle Damba have a different, different solution. Let Uncle Damba go on.
Um. Um. Okay, thank you. I thought I don't know that Moridi Amutu. The answer to your question is um is one.
No. One, only one.
Yeah. Answer, you give us your.
You know, you know, get your, you know, get your eyeglass today.
Give us the money, give us the money.
It depends on the, are you asking based on uh if he's a bull or 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 a break?
Just answer, answer what is on the screen and tell us your basis.
That is, my answer is one.
Uh Kawaye now.
Kawaye.
Okay, 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 okay. For example, here is um in standard arithmetic, one plus one is equals to two, but in a bullying.
Uh no, follow the trend, follow the trend. Two and one is twenty one, three and one is thirty one, four and one is forty one, one and one is what?
Wait, wait, I did, uh I think some, some, some character is there, I mean, some number is missing.
There is no character in figure, so I don't know where you.
Excuse me, excuse me, I did not see the upper number.
Give us your Ajma.
Eight minutes, eight minutes, eight minutes, eight minutes, eight minutes. Eight minutes, okay, okay, sorry, um oh, I thought I'm speaking to Indians.
Have you seen it well now? Have you seen it well?
Yeah, down, down, down. I see the last one, the last one, take it down small, the last one, down, small, down.
Down, okay.
Oh, I think it's from my screen, it's from my screen, sorry. The last number, I can see the last number, I only see three, two, three, uh four and the last one. Let me see, okay, I see. Nice, nice, it's, yeah, it's okay, nice, okay, yeah, thank you.
Uh huh.
So, two and the.
Two and one is twenty one, three and one is thirty one.
Thirty one, then four.
Four and one is forty one, one and one.
It one and one equals to um equals to um one.
Okay, you still intend the one.
Yeah.
I see fifty. But the, the, the. Okay, why Jesus, why Jesus, but you are recording the other wrong answers to this? Because.
Oh, yeah, you put a wrong answer. Why Jesus, I'm an answer. Bara answer, I, I do, any one, any one subject to this.
Okay, oh, compiling, we are still compiling, so uh the answer is not yet to be revealed until, until we are satisfied that now we're today enough.
Two hands are up, two hands are up.
Okay, uh Namak. Namak, you are supposed to have a, okay, you were kicked out before, so unmute.
Yes, yes, the answer to the question is eleven. If I, two plus one, if two plus one.
It's not one.
Who is it? Is it, I, he, but not because he have.
He brought the wrong thing, no, be a, who are you?
Uh my, my, I'm a matter, I put this thing.
The thing is, I've ju, I've, I've just come to understand that all of you live far, far away from School Road.
Twenty one.
Uh Mazie, okay, any person, any person that I support, eh eh.
You're supposed to get, generate a lot of money, oh. I'm telling you. If you fail them, you go pay ten Ajma or forty, forty five Ajma, anybody will fail them. If you, before you come and answer, fail them.
So we have one more attempt, then why Jesus will tell us the answer and then a record of the failures so that uh I'm ready, yeah.
Anybody who have failed, go pay, go pay.
After, after honorable Emelika, then why Jesus will come up and yeah, yeah, there are problems. If you fail them, because yeah, I know, I know the answer.
Pay, failure go pay, anybody who make it, go pay.
Honorable, go on.
Uh, I don't, uh, I, I was thinking, uh, let me try, uh, ten to one.
Ten. This, this, this is not a line job, this is not a one. Uh hundred and one to, hundred and one to one.
Ten to one.
Ten to one.
Yeah.
Why Jesus, why Jesus, problem, problem we start when you don't give us accurate, correct amount from all this. iPhone, iPhone, uh Chris, if you can, I don't know who first raised the hand, so go on, please.
Failure, go pay, winner, go pay. Money we need to.
Uh yes, is it uh Akaji, Akar, Akaji Akonova?
Hey, Akaji Akonova.
Yeah, good evening, behalf France. Good evening, the honorable in the house, I greet everyone. I think the question is just simple, it's just about a power of one. The power of oneness, that one makes everything powerful. If you add the one to one, what we are seeking in this struggle is oneness. And that is the most important number. So one and one is one, we are one in this trouble and we need each other in this trouble. That is just my own understanding about it, so the power of oneness, all of them connect to one, 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 so we are one.
God bless you, put it right, that's what I meant, but you put it right, you put it right, that supports you.
Don't, don't take up a fight, you, otherwise you cannot win, you cannot, you yourself, eight hand you have to five.
We will reach Supreme Court. I dey rule Supreme Court in this case.
No problem, one next, oh.
Yeah, I can do well, I can do well.
Okay.
Sorry, network focus, I'm up at the other line, so I will let them phone now. From here, like I said, if two, two add to one is twenty one, three add to one is thirty one, four add to one is forty one, then one add to one is eleven, so the answer is eleven, thank you.
Okay.
Wow.
I think.
Your language.
Why, why Jesus, intentionally?
Your language is mathematically wrong, you didn't say two add to one, you said two and one.
It's an error that I discovered, error in calculation that I discovered. And I want to, second, but I have a mind and what is.
What is missing, if you get the formula, you get the answer, the formula is hidden.
I can't get the way, I think my hand is still up, sir.
Uh. I have a. Give me your answer, remember.
I have an audit.
Okay, go on.
Yeah, she's from Canada, Sister Unice.
Yeah.
She's still writing. Ten thousand naira, ten thousand Aj for Kula Nots, twenty thousand Aj for, to support A P M's speech, thirty thousand Aj to support the B L A. For now, that is what remain, but they say still money here, but he still telling me how much. I will come back later when she finish.
The one you have now is how much?
The one I have now here is uh ten, twenty, thirty, which is say sixty thousand so far.
Okay. Just, just. Yeah. Yes, you have, I have one more attempt, one more attempt, I think iPhone, I can, then we, we break, we break it down.
Logical digestion, logical digestion?
We need all, both logical and illogical, that is, uh, uh, any one of them that can lead us to the answer.
Yes, I'll give you Ajma. Still, the other.
The other is still, still on, the other is.
Ask the first of logical digestion.
The other is.
Please, I, 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 her own case is uh, is about getting something, uh, uh, something special because not knowing the answer is even double. Okay, no, no, okay, no, sorry, listen, I take it back.
Mazie, okay.
Uh, uh, Ma, uh, Namak, wait, wait, I want somebody that is attempting to solve.
Okay, update is better, update than Bakara.
It might go a lot to the Ajma support to not knowing the answer.
Oh gosh, okay, uh, um, Uncle the number, uh huh, good, Uncle the number, I'm up for answer, uh huh, good.
What the number of failure, I have five, five times, five times, I'm keeping the record.
Okay, come on, we twenty, twenty Ajma, uh huh, well, say Uncle the number, sorry, say the number, Bakara. I question Bakara from the other one, oh, I paid my other one. But it's a.
It's a twenty thousand. Twenty Ajma, twenty Ajma.
Oneness.
I think, a question, and uh, if you have one, also be preparing because uh we are going to attempt to all the puzzles that remain unsolved till it. So if you have, if you have yours, uh put it, put it out. You can even use yours to bail yourself from a wrong answer, but uh there's no guarantee, we decide that later. Uh but we decide that whether you use your question to bail yourself some time.
What is the monetary uh value of failure?
Monetary, uh, hundred thousand Aj, hundred thousand, wait.
Mazie, okay, I took, what I have, monetary value of failure, five, five thousand Aj.
Okay. Who can make, who can make, make uh ten thousand Aj, you make quite twenty, you make quite.
Failure, failure is ten thousand Aj.
Okay. Uh firstly, so understanding the question, uh, that is, that is the problem, you know, why Jesus just. So please, who is next? Um, uh. Chris and then uh.
Also, 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 never try, let also try.
Okay, Victor, answer, you're welcome. But Mazie, you are, you are unmuted, you're welcome.
Okay, okay. Now, Ludo, well, oh.
Oh, Kao, Kao.
I am one of the behalf France, I have been on Aludo stage today. I do, good. I am more, I, 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 I'm more, also, I'm a supporter, Aludo, with fifty thousand Aj matter. Animal, animal, who, whom, I see my brothers and sisters. I say, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, sister, I kill, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a number. And Mazie, I'm major, oh, yeah, now, I guess, now that's our brother, one night work, I hope, there at that time. All the kitchen has here, freedom for all, all I need, I need, let not together, now Finland, so always go to one night work. It might go sometimes, I behind us, our different names, so. So Ajma fifty thousand Aj, now supporter Aludo, now Ludo, she, thank you. First June, we connect to each other. I give a motion.
You can send the one notice, you can send the one notice.
Miss Rona, she, she, um, um, I'm, 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 open, open.
Okay.
We are coming, we are coming.
Thank you, yes, yes, so you can decide, if, why Jesus have to give us the answer now so that come up with another question? Another question that is coming up.
Everyone, everyone update, update, please.
Okay.
Yes, like I was saying before, one that Unice from Canada have, other than other people. Ten thousand Kula Nots. Twenty thousand Aj for A P M's speech, thirty thousand Aj for B L A, ten thousand Aj for Mazie Omeka, five thousand Aj for, I want, I want, I want, man. Five thousand Aj for Wada Rose. Eighteen thousand Aj, thank you, that's my.
Thank you, thank you. One day Unice, email now, thank you so much, we are proud of you.
One day Unice, email now, thank you. Uh I think, uh, let us refresh a bit so that. Let us refresh a bit. Yeah. Okay, you, we are now in eh, support APM with quiz. Eh, quiz. Your knowledge is God watch. So eh, the process is eh, if you ask eh, a non-incredible question, you pay. If somebody give a wrong question, a wrong answer, he pay. If you cannot calculate well, you pay. So, whichever way, even if you don't know the answer, you pay. I think I'm unfair enough.
If you know the answer, you pay, you don't know the answer.
If you know the answer, that is you pay, you know, that, even if you. So, um, I think one of these also come up with the answer, so that we take up the next question.
I want to greet everyone. Ah, let me see some opportunity before we let's. And eh, thank. And eh, we want to make the proof. As eh, we have a important in the. Want to solidate in a Biafra. Making sure that we create active awareness. Is that, any eh, state administrator that is not in the state admin should please, would then join hands. Let us make this thing to have root, solid root in the homeland. So, having said that, all the, that is necessary, if we go to the Ministry of Eternal Affairs platform, you will see what we have penciled down, look at it, and it see how you can create something that will give us massive response. I want we will have eh, fundraising national, we have about one thousand people. We want to see that eh, any state that is doing fundraising like this, we have up to hundred, two hundred people, that time I will be very, very happy. So I want us to have this eh, in our mind. Eh, then, having said that, if we look at that, what I have said there, you see two and the one. You see one. Three and the one. You see thirty one. Four and one is forty one. Now, eh, this is just what we call quantitative act, eh, eh, attitude or what? One and one. You see that there's appearance of T in every of, and that one adding. So, what should be?
One to one.
But eh, the person that is calculating is maybe want to make it to sound too sweet. He said is eh, eleven, but eh, it is one T one. Because all of the figures until ninety, ninety-one will be T one. Every other thing is T one, T one, why would one and one be eleven? One and one should be one T one. So if your answer is not one T one, please pay us.
I think I got it, eh.
Eh, you got it, but I would have allowed you to explain to us.
Ah, now, wow, okay, I.
The, the thing is, you may try, it have a problem, you may try again, it have a problem. Having attempted, it have a problem.
Ah, so, so.
If you try two times, it have a problem two times.
I said, eh, to be honest, why Jesus, I don't know how you got this eh, one and one, and then eh, coming to something to algebra, to character, to.
I need an attorney, I need an attorney.
Go to court.
I want to sue him for misleading us.
If your answer is not one T one.
So my, my, my own was eh, gotten out of a expo, is it what you all mean?
Other, other, Daniel, give us our money, oh.
No, no problem, eh, no, no problem.
Write all the names.
I beg, oh, this on next, and don't come with this kind of eh, this, this kind of question, no, I beg, you get acid in.
The, the clever one be that. Very clever.
So, please, watch carefully. The next question.
Definitely, like game we played last time during the, is it during a U S R home meeting? Ah, that game was very, very sweet. Eh, something like that, it could us, bring something like this up whenever we gather is good. Um, you know, at least we can be cracking and eh, you know, everything that to generate money, 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 now we need. So please eh, my own added to ninety eh, gemma, it will be hundred eh, gemma. So please eh, eh, good morning here, thank you, sir. Darren.
Thank you, so the next eh, the next comes up, so watch carefully. If you get eh, 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 papers and eh, this, you can take notes.
Ma, Mazi, okay, let me get this eh. iPhone, iPhone, say add eh, who is this iPhone?
Eh, I'm here.
iPhone is eh.
Paris and Kiro.
iPhone is eh, Iguiro.
Okay. It's eh, add eh, thirty what?
Oh, I've redeemed it already, yeah.
And that was it, now the thirty plus fifteen, I give before, which made it eh, eighty.
Okay, which has been redeemed already. And then I have twenty again, twenty eh, gemma, that is, that I'm here to redeem.
For answering eh, the question too fast.
Yes.
No, no, for not knowing the que, not knowing the answer.
Eh, eh, and, and telling, you could the number, nah. Yes, so, yes, 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 that is double, double fine.
Correct you, as the twenty thousand eh, gemma, eh, J has eh, been redeemed.
So, altogether, we'll be hundred, hundred eh, gemma.
Yeah, eighty has been redeemed, eh, what I'm owing now. I've not redeemed, oh, everything will be hundred eh, gemma, not redeem any, tomorrow everything will redeem, thank you. Bye for now, is eh, please, okay, thank you so much.
Yes, okay, eh, eh, just pay eh, attention. Pay attention. So the next question will be from here. Take notes of states and their capitals, you have thirty seconds time. Is it coming up?
No.
Okay, I know.
Okay, it's out now.
Eh, sorry, I think I have, I have to start, I have to start, I have to start eh, I have to start up again. Eh, I'm taking too fast. So, okay, you have at the five seconds time. So, I think the time is up. So, now the question is. Which states surround Ebube? How many are there? Did you get the question?
Ye- yes.
Yeah, so eh, you have all seen, watched the map. Eh, you have, you had eh, enough time to do that. Eh, now, mention all the states that surrounds Ebube and their capitals. Who laughed, who, who, who laughed in the class, eh, who laughed in the class? I think there are about four or five states that surrounds a capital territory. And their capitals. Difficult, okay, and then, let's do it eh, the other way. Let us, let us help it. I know it's, it's true difficult without expo.
Should it be, um, should we just mention one, one, or?
The three. Eh, you can, eh, you can, eh, you can give all the answers, you can give all the answers if you like. Another person have to eh, try, another person have to give his answer.
Okay, S S G, try first.
It's a, I should try first. Let me talk this way. We have Aludo. We have.
If you are watching some, eh, eh, I will know, if you are watching something, the eh, 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 the eh, this has been set, you don't need to watch any other thing in your gadget. I know a lot of you are smart, smarter than me, oh.
Do I go ahead?
Go ahead, make it fast, so that another will eh, will give his, without allowing time for expo, yeah.
We have a keyword date. We have Aludo. We have Omeri. We have eh, um, Eboy. I think that's the mark.
I finished? Why do you know, we don't have time, we have to give your eh, answers. Sweet, you are done? You are, you already failed, you already failed, you already failed it. So another person can try. Who want to try? Our capital is supposed to be famous and to be known by everyone of us here. Maybe before I even put that question out, I already know the host days, even the counties and the, the, everything eh, that's. But don't ask me, don't ask me to, to say that. Okay, we are all, okay, okay, we are, okay, let's, eh, give us, please eh, twenty minutes. Any attempt?
No.
Okay. So only eh, my Jesus, that eh, eh, third it, let me eh, put it back. Let me put it back.
Make, make I try?
Okay, try, try, you, you, you have.
Eh, anyway, anyway, I'll answer. I'll answer it, cool. Have you?
And now, go on.
Don't say why be.
And where Aludo? Okay, no, Aludo, Aludo, they won't give bond. I'll answer, um, I'll keep with. Keep what there?
You go on, eh, eh, are you asking the Juleto?
There you got me. Eh, then eh, I'll keep with and then eh, um, eh, okay, I, I look aside, it's a long stop. I'll answer, I'll keep with and eh.
Ask eh, a rank. People should, eh, people should pay attention for O B J questions. The, the question is, mention these states and capitals and their capitals. Yeah, all mentioning, but it's all, it's okay, eh, if already failed eh, but a few. Eh, any other before we bring out the answer? Okay, eh, so the let's go to the screen again. So this is the capital. You have eh, you have Aludo. You have Okigwe. You have this number four is eh, this number four is eh, Odomewu. Eh, it wasn't eh, written, then you have Ikamba. You have Ezani. And you have anyone. So, uh, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, seven states. So for the capitals, that will be for yeah, another day. Uh, don't ask me, uh, that, that will be, uh, in a practical, practical exam that will come up next day.
Which are the same between Ikemba and Okiwu?
Uh, between Ikemba and Okiwu, Olo?
No, no, no.
Okay, Ikemba, 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 between Ikemba, and that is Odumewu.
Okay, that's all.
And that's all, it's Odumewu, yes.
Okay, okay. Wow. Okay, Aludu by, um, Abreba.
Sorry. Olo?
No, Aludu is by Abreba.
Yes.
Uh, boundary with, um.
Ed.
With Ed, not, not, uh, is it, no.
No, in Aludu, I mean in Aludu or Abreba.
No, 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 that is, uh, Isuji.
Aludu had towards Isuji, who, who side?
That is Isuji Uturu. Yeah, this place is Isuji Uturu, yeah. Then here is Abreba, uh, close to where the Eda capital is, there are, there are, there are. So, uh, um, so that is, that is it. Only, only two attempts with failures, S A take note.
But Okiwu is there now.
Okiwu is there.
To mention that.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that is the end, that is the end of, that is the end, we are almost done. Um, sorry. Uh, the next will be, uh, A P M closing, if he's around, let's call up him to, for his closing remark. I don't know if Minister of Information have something to tell us. If he's still here.
Is A P M not there?
Uh, A P M left before, I don't know if he's engaged, there's nowhere.
Okay. Where are we on the program, are we on the ending path?
Yeah, closing remarks, uh, should be closing remarks.
Okay. All right.
My Minister of Information, why you, you boy said they not arrest you for America?
If, if not for America, they even arrest myself, you know for good.
Yes, sir.
From there now, I will have the opportunity to see my honorable Rep. Milike. I will have the opportunity to see my A P M. I will have the opportunity to see all the reps and admins that are in America.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
If, if there is anything, if there is any government that want to arrest me, they should wait for America to arrest me first before any other government will come. Because I want to be in America and act as Donald Trump while he must arrest freedom fighters who are fighting to liberate their people.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Aludu Kueno. Aludu Kueno.
Sorry, one update, please, one update, please. Um, Wada Uju from Germany, you continue Ajama to pick color.
Wada Uju?
Uju, yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Yeah.
Fifty?
Twenty Ajama.
Twenty?
Twenty Ajama, ah, she says on behalf of Ikemba, Ikemba.
Okay, that's all right, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Aludu Kueno. Thank you, Aludu, Aludu won the most viable state in the first quarter of twenty twenty five. And they are running to clinch that trophy again. And the second quarter, we are watching, so every other state will wake up. That Aludu do not carry everything, leave them, if Aludu carry everything finished, leave you, waiting to go con carry.
Last now.
Waiting to con carry, it won't be last last. So we appreciate the executives and the citizens of Aludu. You guys have been very strong behind the government since after the detention of A P M. The unwavering support and stand that you guys have demonstrated is what every other state should emulate. We appreciate everyone that came in. We appreciate all the heroes and heroines of our time. We appreciate our leaders who are appearing in court on daily basis to represent Biafra. Our heroes who are sacrificing on daily basis for us to have a home called Biafra land. And we want the enemies of Biafra. And those that, they don't see what we are doing. That they should start making reports when they see all the wutu wutus that the Biafra Defence Forces are doing. Yesterday, a combined zoo and Cameroonian terrorists. By target that came to kill our Biafrans was brought down by the Biafra Navy.
Wow.
Why are you guys not reporting it?
Mm hmm, wow. Wow. I've not heard that, I didn't read it anywhere.
Okay.
They don't report such, they don't.
That is why we, the Biafran people, we need to make our reportage. When they don't report about you, it's because they don't want to validate your news so that the entire world will not hear it. So you have to, in another way, report your news and make it to go viral. And for the entire world to be drawn to the attention of this, the wutu wutu must continue.
Yes.
When the wutu wutu continue, this time, maybe they will be crying, shouting on a. Um. Okay, Chukon Kere, before they were shouting on Simon Eba. This time, when they will shout on Okay, Chukon Kere, we, we will tell you, show us where Okay, Chukon Kere is doing anything in Biafra land.
Mm hmm.
The people that are doing the thing, you hear them speak, I, I want Biafra, I want Biafra, give us Biafra or you leave Biafra land. So waiting Okay, Chukon Kere to you. See this Biafra, our Prime Minister had promised them, we will bring this freedom from exile.
Yes.
Because freedom is not in Nigeria. If freedom was in Nigeria, we would have sat down on the table, signed documents, and then we go our ways. But the freedom is not there. And let us remind those that they, they don't see us in the homeland. When the Queen of England forcefully amalgamated all of you into the contraption that you are suffering today, was she in Nigeria to do it?
I say no.
She was in exile doing it, Abi. They were representatives in Bi- in Biafra land and in the entirety of Nigeria, right, to do it. And it was done properly. That is where all of you are. You see this Biafra, like our A P M said, we will stay in this exile. And lock the two of your legs into one bucket. And then this Biafra will be fully liberated, we are there. We're doing it on daily basis. This is not time for choo choo choo, this is time for actions. And we need Ajama to make all this wutu wutu to speak the bigger volume. Everywhere we go, the world wants to see the problem that you have been created to solve another problem. Because problem of inversion takeover has been created. For us to solve this problem, we need to create a counter problem that is more momentous in nature than the one that has existed. Nobody will talk about now Newton law, I'm talking.
Mm hmm.
Said to every force, it must be opposite, eh? But we are, we are not saying equal, we are telling you more greater force to be able to get the reaction. So we are creating the reaction of everybody to talk and acknowledge Biafra. If you are in the media, we warn again. Stop destroying your images because you may think that you are destroying the images of B R G I, but you end up destroying your image. The Biafra Defence Forces, the B R G I, and every form. And nature that we have to use to destroy the zoo, they are happening. But if you are blind and deaf and dumb, you will not see what we are doing. Because you did not appreciate it when Prime Minister was here. Or is, is it the Prime Minister that will speak from morning till night? They will still say he's a grammar. Today is not yet, is it okay in Kere now, that is A P M, that you now acknowledge more than the Prime Minister? So if you did not acknowledge God, how will you acknowledge Jesus, talk less of his angels? So, if you love God, do his commandment, but you're not doing his commandment. The Prime Minister told everybody, fall back, align with B R G I, give them all your support so that we can do what, get the recognition of Biafra. And for B D F to liberate Biafra land, which one are you doing, you are in the media, you're using your platforms to propagate nonsense. Be careful because you are disgracing yourself. If Biafran people are seeing what we are doing, the work from the lobbying and going to come in out. The Defence Forces that, as some of you, do not even want to use your platform to do publicity for fundraising, they are working strong. You can't even spend one hour to do publicity and awareness for fundraising or town hall meeting. You can't even post the flyer of fundraising, you can't even post the flyer of on all meeting. What are you doing?
And they are asking for accountability, asking what are we doing?
Okay. You can't post flyer of fundraising, you can't post flyer all about this. And yet, you're the one questioning A P M and B R G I and Biafra Defence Forces what they are doing. You are sleeping and snoring. Yesterday, the Biafra Defence was in the Nepal wing. Alright, good night. Engaged the terrorists and then brought down their aircraft that they came to finish Biafrans. But you are sleeping, snoring, when you wake up, you come to the media and say, they have already been funded, they are not doing anything. B R G I are not doing anything, you are not doing anything, it is, it is not to carry back. Oh, if it is the bag of our A P M that he carries to do guy man, I in the vexuna, make or not follow go carry back, make we see now. We want to see the faceless people that will be talking about people that carry back, people that carry back, we see them physically, nobody saw. We see our A P M physically carrying the pack boldly, walking into Washington, having meetings. You people are looking from behind.
The same people that carry back is the same people that they beg for money.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Okay. Anyway, we appreciate Biafra, those that are making things happen since after the convention. Thank you all that have not joined the calm of destruction to destroy this government. And I wonder if the A P M. Would the entire B R G I cabinet had allow you people to destroy the Biafra Defence Forces and finish. The Biafra government in Israel and finish, where will you be coming to criticize now? Since you're on the criticism side, what will you say to criticize? Because you have not contributed anything, you're just on defense to criticize, but you cannot contribute anything to move us forward. You guys can make your money on the media, but this is from using Biafran government as your topic. By the time I open that package, by the time I turn the radar from where we are, you people. Biafrans will put you people in the trash, huh? Our focus is on our defense, our focus is on our political and diplomatic lobbying. We don't want to have time for idiot. Idiot is described as people that do not care about how far people are destroying the government, how far people are destroying the Biafra Defence Forces. How far people are destroying the template of B R G I. Idiot are people that only care about how much they make from their social media platform on talking every day. They are only looking at the metrics of how much they make this month, how much they made that month. The kind of video, the kind of propaganda, the kind of topic they need to use to, that they can drive more traffic, these are idiot. Who do not contribute anything to the government. Flyer of fundraising, you cannot post. Okay, maybe when you post that one and you see that every other people post, they will not pay you for that one, or maybe they will sanction your account. Because you have posted something other people post. You only have to privatize so that you can make your money. Biafran government is what you will use to shred on the table. Is this though? Every Biafran in the media, please, appreciate the work of the Biafra Defence Forces, share all their works. Few days ago, I made announcement and I said, do less of the talking. But post more of the works of the Biafra Defence Forces. Let it spread everywhere so that we can convince Finland government, convince the international community. And one Nigeria also to see that in the absence of our Prime Minister, which they had a claim that is the one responsible for us freeing ourselves. I don't know how you will say one person is responsible for us to free ourselves against the terrorism. So you're telling us that without this one person, we will all put our heads down and tell the terrorists to use axe and cut our heads off because we are useless, Abi? So what we do now will free our leaders. That is why the Zoo Court do not have anything to say about our Supreme Leader. So hundred judges and courts will be doing the trial from January to December, when they are tired, they will come out. Attorney General of Nigeria, who said today, eh, we have finalized the installation of Simon Eba to Nigeria in no rest twenty four hours. Oh, eh, I did not say so, we did not do, we are not concluding, we are not making such statement, are you tired of extracting him? You people wanted his head on the spike, are you guys tired? Oh, you guys doesn't need to be tired, because the plan was that in the absence of Prime Minister, Biafrans will be totally wiped off. But the difference has become the case. So airborne to the Biafra Defense.
Airborne.
To the Biafra. Airborne to the Biafra. And airborne to B R G I.
Airborne to B R G I.
Airborne to B R G I.
Airborne to Biafrans in the homeland.
Airborne to Biafrans in homeland. The Biafran people in the homeland has paid off. We salute everybody from Aludu, they were from here, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Honorable Minister, thank you.
Yeah, I think that was the last thing on the agenda.